Okay, we're good. All right, so the next point on the agenda is the student representative report.
I went to classes like I normally do and not one person had anything for me to bring up. So I guess I have nothing to report this week. Yeah, I think everyone's a little distracted by the warm weather. It was amazing. Everyone loved it. I didn't hear any complaints at all actually.
Next is the board goals update.
There's really nothing new right there. Just stop right there. There was a question about the cost for the restorative practices training. The price is on there, three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. This was funded through money that we received from the National Writing Project as a model, which I already told you we were going to do, and some of our Title II grant monies. That is in direct relationship to board goal action. Little check mark for read. And that's it. There's really nothing. Oh, I highlighted things. Schedule 10A has been released to the high school staff for comment and review. To date, I've received no formal form comments, but people are in dialogue. So I'm sure there'll be some committee will be meeting again on May 30th and they will make their decision. I will not be there. And the last one, do we have another one?
Yeah, I think our committee meeting on the 30th is to integrate comments and if there's any modifications, then bring it to the next board meeting. We're feeling pretty good about it. So we're really looking for the feedback at this point.
All right, so then the last piece is technology. So now that the rollout plan is ready, the next step is the development of a process to revise curriculum for the use of a one-to-one in that kind of environment, and that's it's the process of how to do that and how to think about our curriculum. So that's the next step for the tech meeting, and they're meeting sometime in June.
Third, my calendar doesn't work.
Sometime, yes. Sometime in June. So they've got a meeting coming up. And that's it?
Okay, any comments or questions? I have a question.
Sure.
It's about the threat assessment team, which I know already has a check, but I still wanted to ask a question.
Mrs. Bob, I was here.
And that is, when we talked about it originally, one of the things we had discussed or suggested is that we have an anonymous tip line, and I was just wondering if that's still on up for consideration at all.
There is.
I noticed it was not in the.
There are some platforms where, but we're trying to figure out, there's a neighboring school has done something similar and we haven't really had any feedback. We've requested feedback as to how it's going, but we haven't really gotten anything. We've dabbled with doing like a Google form. That's just like an information thing. But beyond that stage, we're actually hoping for more feedback from other locations that have done it, but we haven't really heard. There was also another service that we learned about through Catholic Charities that was an actual telephone number. Like it was a number that we could be linked to someone's phone and doing it that way. But that's what we're just at the point of investigating really.
So I know when I was researching it, when you were in the beginning of parts of this, I found that it's a very common thing that's been done in different places.
Do you have like an article or something like just give me a idea of where?
Maybe I'll see if I can come up with it.
I'll look up.
I know I shared a lot of that.
You shared with us already. I think I have stuff.
But I know that it's something that's frequently recommended and you can see that as something that would get them early alert.
Yeah, great. Yeah, you do that.
Anything else on that?
If you do decide to go to an email solution, we use that for some of our anonymous things on campus. Yeah, I would make sure that you have it go multiple places.
There is a way of doing it, like if we did it through like a Google form, that it will notify people that you have tagged on there that a message is coming. So there is that way. It's not a hundred percent though. Like I tried using it with some of our work with the PPS human counseling referrals and so on. And it's not a hundred percent. So it's kind of, it was one of those where I'm trying not to spend money on something, but at the same time have it be.
It's gotta be reliable.
Exactly, or what's the point of it? So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Anything else on that, on the goals? Okay, the next point is the home run program.
Oh, that's me too. I made this lovely sheet and then I realized I tried to do Canjo colors and. Well, that's a little, no. Blue came up beautiful, but come on, we're orange. It's fine. Or yellow in this case. It's orange in this form. So the home run program, this is just really a snippet of how the program's been going. The mission of the program is to strengthen children and families so they can live safely, independently, and productively within their communities. And so these are the ways that our current home run, they call it a family, because they have a special name, family specialist is helping to do that. Okay? The person I gave a little bit of background down at the bottom is our, our family specialist is Nicole Stroback. Okay, so she's worked within several agencies that have reached out to families more in the Cobleskill School, Harriet County area in the past. But right now, we still currently have nine open family cases out of nine out of 10. We still have two that are floating out there right now. We invited more families than this to join. Some have outright said no, some have said yes, and then we don't get calls back to go and fill out paperwork. There is quite a bit of things that need to be signed off by families. So there's been some that have just been lost in the mix because the family hasn't agreed to follow up.
So are these 19, so these 19 are only kids contained in 10 families?
Yes.
Okay, so 10 is the total that have received any service from us?
Yes, within a time. So once goals are met, so they develop goals with the family and the student, once those goals are met, the case is closed. It then, you know, it then opens for another family.
So one's been closed, so now we have an open.
No, no. We started with, it kind of goes slowly. You build and build and build, and we're building up to, we've had nine families open. Okay? The 10th slot that we have, we have two different families who have been offered that slot at this time that are kind of like, ah, we really can't, you know, other ways of getting some support. So they haven't, one, that spot has been filled yet.
Okay, so it's 19 students and nine families.
Yes, yes. Yep, yep. So students meet with the family specialist, two plus times weekly, depends on how many times, if it's more than that. But it's usually at least two small skill building groups. It might be just, oh, a student is in, is having a moment of crisis, a moment of, you know, just some sort of issue, that they will go and reach out and help work with that student in cooperation with some of our other PPS members. So they meet with the students and then two times per month, the family specialist also works with the family. So that might be transporting the family to medical appointments, the child's mental health appointments, getting glasses. We've had that couple, success twice with students that we've been trying to get glasses for, and within like the first month, they all had, you know, full doctor's appointments and glasses were secured and replacement glasses in some cases. So, so she's done quite a bit of work with that, but she'll go into the home as well. They have to do a full safety assessment of the family's home. So that's another barrier for them.
For what?
Safety assessment of the family's home. So some families are a bit resistant to allow the person in there. There's still, you know, we have to make little inroads, but in some cases they found that they didn't have a fire extinguisher in the home. And so she's obtained those, smoke detectors, she's helped obtain for families that didn't have those. So she has provided some of those types of things for the home. Couple of highlights. We had one student, attendance was horrible. The student was, if they were in school, it was incredibly late to school. The student had a variety of services in the morning and they were missing them. So after a variety of trials and errors to get the student there, one really annoying alarm clock that the child was falling in love with is what gets that whole family to school on time. So that's exciting. So the, I was kind of just looking at the data. I mean, it's increased like exponentially since that one fix. I mean, we did everything under the sun, like figuring out just transportation, the whole nine yards, that alarm clock worked. Some families, they've been helping them access just community resources that you would think, oh, they're out there, but people aren't really familiar with, like heat, Medicaid transport, the food bank, those types of services that they're like, okay, here's where it is. This is how you access it. So that's been a big one for us. They've also worked on providing the students with opportunities for enrichment programs during breaks. So several, many of our students that participate in this program don't have access to, they aren't necessarily going out into the community and participating in events out the Arkell Library or events that might be, you know, outside of Canjo Harriet even. So like going into Cobleskill, going into Amsterdam, Albany, wherever, and kind of broadening their horizons. They take the students to those places. And if you look over to the right in the part that you really can't see, you can see, good. There's, this is what they have planned for the summer. Okay?
And are our families participating in those things?
Yep, yep. And it's free of cost to the family. We're not paying for it either. It's just part of how the program works.
Transportation.
We're helping with transportation in some regards because our family specialist does not have a large enough vehicle to transport all of them, but we're working with transportation to make that happen for the summer for them when they have larger trips. Summer camps and so on, they've been working on, they've been helping families, in some cases getting the adults access to their own mental health providers so that they can, you know, help take care of themselves and get on the right track. So honestly, all in all, it's been very positive. There's, there were so many things that I could have added. I just pulled the highlights for a one-page snapshot, but we've been really happy with it. And what I'm excited about is that we're not losing touch with these students over the summer either. So we've always, I know that Ms. Ward has always expressed concern, well, during those, during those breaks, those lengthy breaks, do the kids have food? Do the kids have, you know, someone out there that cares that takes them to do things? And this, you know, there's a pretty robust calendar they have for the summer, and that is one of our people that will be there and that will give us feedback, firsthand feedback about how students are doing, how they're out there and doing over the summer. So.
Can you remind us how much this service costs?
You're gonna ask that. It was about 34 all done, but it goes through a poster. So when we figured it out, it's like, I want to say it was 12, about 12 once we go through.
Because we get some, okay. And, oh, I asked this a couple of months ago, but I'll ask again. Good things happening that's clear from what you're saying. And do you still feel like it's offloading work from your staff?
These, I know, for example, our social worker in some of these cases, trying to get these kids appointments for eyeglasses, just one example, took a long time. It was, it was her role to drive kids down to, to our local person and then get them back. Now they're not doing that as much, not for these families. Helping with food, making sure that they have food and that they're taken care of, helping with the parents in some regards because some are, really do need a lot of support. So that's kind of taking that, you know, off of our social worker and for the, that's one area. Counseling as well, because these, she's able to get in there and work with those students almost at the drop of a hat, just some regard. She's all over the place though. She's busy. She routinely has to tell me where she is because she's all over the place.
Anyone else? Oh, I just have a question. So how does it work, the interaction between our PPS team and this?
Well, she was here with us today. Our PPS team was meeting through working on our counseling plan. She attends all of our PPS meetings. So we meet every other week. So she comes to all of those. She have, everyone has, all of us on speed dial. So she is routinely will, will reach out like, I don't really know, you know, this student, I'm kind of unsure about what to do. She'll reach out to Lindsay, our crisis, Lindsay, our social worker, Emily, our crisis counselor, Mrs. Nair, our school family facilitator, and reach out and like get that information. So she's really been like, she's on an island at all. She's truly a member of the team. And I, that's how I presented, I need a team player for us because that's how our PPS team runs. So it's been good.
Anyone else? All right, thanks very much. It's great team.
One question. Has this person been with us from the first day we went into it?
Yes, that was January.
Same resource?
Yep, yep.
And do we have a sense that this person kind of stays with our district?
Yes. It was hired when we did the interviews. They specifically had applications in their recruitment based on this district. Okay, so people, when they said, I want to, you know, I'm applying for this program, it was home run Canjo Harriet.
Okay.
Thank you. I know I went into this very hopeful and it seems like it's really.
We're happy and I think we'll continue to grow.
Thank you. Okay, the next generation standards implementation.
Yes, Lord. Our district has joined the HFN BOSIS Regional Initiative, which is linked with the CAP region initiative for the next gen standards. Today, our entire district as well as teachers from Glover'sville, Amsterdam, Lake Pleasant, Broad Alden, met at BOSIS. We, we were not able to go when districts went in March because we had our own PD plans. So this was our catch-up day so we could be in line with the rest of the districts in the region. Where it was an overview of unpacking the standards, an idea of that where we're going is that there'll be summer work. Then there'll be the two common PD days in October, November of next year where all the districts will work together. And our ultimate goal is so by next September, so September 2020, we are ready with fluent in the next gen standards and how that affects curriculum. I think at an elementary level, to go from big to little, our teachers were, I worked with grade three through five, and they worked fastidiously on unpacking the standards and what are these specific skills. And we are eager to go back to the building and identify our priority standards and really get to work. So see how much we can implement next year.
So was the entire staff was there at this meeting?
Yes. We have a kind of a steering committee here in the district, you could call it, and we are meeting next Thursday to talk K-12 of how did it go, where do people in the different buildings feel they need more time, more effort, and take the pulse of our specific district.
So this was, was it our district K-12 or, okay.
So just to add a couple of things to it, the state is trying very hard and working very hard this time around to make sure that there is enough lead-in time for standards implementation to do it appropriately. We did not have that lead-in time with Common Core. It was a random Tuesday and all of a sudden you're going to do Common Core. Literally, that's about how it happened. So there was never any opportunity for people to do a deep dive. So I think that's really helpful. There's been a long lead time, so there's no excuse this time. We'll be ready to go. Joining with the region, not just CAP region, but really it follows all along the throughway towards the Syracuse area, then up north a little bit. There will be common and consistent resource developments and things we can all share together so that the work will be distributed. And I think that's going to be really great. That's going to be very helpful. I just would have to give a shout out to three of our staff today who acted as facilitators. Kate Lowery, Donalee Bowerman, and Celia Vanderworker were small group facilitators and helping out, and we really appreciate their work. They're part of the steering committee. They did some work on the March day that we were not able to attend. They went to some training to help out, to help out a little bit there. So we've got a good team of teachers that are representative of K-12 and are working as a steering committee on the standards implementation. So just a shout out to them. I got to roam around and everybody was, was really engaged today and really doing a lot of work in thinking about their standards and thinking about how things roll.
Questions, comments? I just have one. I know with Common Core, there was a very mixed reaction to what it was like, aside from being implemented. Suddenly, even once people got familiar with it, it was very iffy, you know? I was wondering how, how was the staff as a whole feeling about the next generation standards in terms of an approach to teaching?
I can speak to elementary. Things are more condensed and there aren't that many content-specific changes. So it's the, and they've given more examples of what that standard actually looks like when a child's sitting there doing multiplication. And they've also done a very nice job linking, if this is what this multiplication, division standard looks like for third grade, here's how it links to second for repeated addition, and here's how it links to first for number sense, and you click and you literally go back and see it. So those are pieces that people, the teachers were doing that today when I was on the third through fifth grade. So I have not heard too much at the elementary in regards to a negative response.
I think it's secondary wise, it started to bring back some of the freedom to teach. You know, you eliminate those modules, you know, you're letting teachers be the professionals and these are my standards. These are the skills I'm trying to, you know, teach my students, but now that freedom of how you teach that skill is back. If you look at the crosswalks that they've put out, there's a lot of elimination and condensing in both math and especially ELA. So some of the redundant things that were out there, it seems like they streamlined it a little bit more and built in more freedom to teach the way.
Maybe the SED has streamlined something?
Well, this process, the biggest, I think, shift in the next gen was, you know, this team was made up of, you know, teachers and parents and the people that stayed at, so it wasn't a bunch of people from Pearson sitting in a back room. It felt like it was actually done with good intentions in mind rather than money.
And just as a note, if you will recall in 2000, whenever, we were the only district that did not require the modules, K-12. They were optional for teachers to use. After the first year of the modules, some, in our BOSIS area, our, some of our other colleague school districts then joined us. The teachers had the option to it, to use them, but they didn't have to. And I do think it has brought back some of the joy. And if I remember correctly, in math, it's broken up again, which will make math teachers of the local camp much happier, but now it's not so broad that it's a little more condensed and a little more compacted for math. So that was wonderful. So.
And the rollout is this fall?
September 2020.
Yeah, I thought it was a year from now.
Yeah, a year from now. Yeah, so that's why we'll be joining along with the, along the throughway, along with everybody else and doing a regional rollout. So, which is also different than last time when everybody was kind of on her own.
Anything else?
Can I ask a question that's not directly related, but somehow your conversation has still brought this to my brain? I remember when we did the public session about standardized testing, and we had talked about moving forward with the automated testing things. And it seems like the state has pulled back from that, and I just wanted to confirm kind of where we are as a district.
Are you talking about decoupling the baby PR or?
No, the computer-based.
Just the computer-based.
The computer-based testing.
We do not have to do that.
Please can they figure it out and then join.
Well, yeah, and I know there's been problems, but I remembered that it was on our timeline.
It's coming eventually, yeah.
But we're not pushing forward with that.
We did actually have a few students participate in with that through each of our BOSIS, some of our students that are placing programs there. And it was soon after that I had my interview meetings there, and some of the kids actually were like, it wasn't that bad. It was fine. That was math though. So, and that was a little bit smoother than it was for the ELA. But, so we've had a couple of kids dabble in it and, you know, they didn't, didn't phase them as much as I would have thought it would. But if you're in a world where we use iReady and Star Testing and so on, so it's more common.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. Okay, end of year activity schedule?
So Mark, so when you, we can print copies of this for everybody before you leave tonight. So what we, what Mark had asked us to do was to put together the comprehensive list of everything we have happening between May 21st, which was Tuesday, and June 28th with the times, the events, the location, and just a description in case you didn't know of what the events were about. So here they all are. So what I'll ask Patty to do is just make copies so you can have it hang on your fridge or wherever you would like so that you know those things that we have coming up between now and the end of the year. Just reminder, after we come back from Memorial Day break, you know, it's a mad dash.
I will see retirement dinner.
Well, we, I did this before there was such an item.
Is the sports awards holding on that day or?
I have not, yes. Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
We haven't heard anything yet, but depending on the weather and everything that's.
So we can just take a moment to have sympathy for our baseball and softball teams today who got on buses, who rode to their venues and turned around and came back. Yes, they have had just, they have just had a brutal spring. So as far as we know, yes, we'll let you know if that's going to be any different.
Okay, any other comments on the end of year? Okay, then we'll go on to approvals on the Nellis fund expenditure.
So Mr. May, when the power goes out, a lot of things go perky. So Mr. May has been running around like crazy, resetting the doors and everything. So you get me explaining about the Cub Cadet. God help you all. All right, here we go. So what we, as you may recall, the finance committee had talked about the fact that in Mr. May's budget was a specialized mower to hit the hills that we have that was safe and that would do a really good job with the hills. A lot of the hilly areas that require mowing are around the Nellis area. So we did some research as part of our budget reductions and learned that we could use our Nellis funds for this specialized mower. This is what Mr. May has done in preparation for your consideration tonight. He checked with two Cub Cadet dealers and they were able to match the same price of $12,599. During his work, he also learned that we were able to get a municipal discount for the mowers as well. There is another mower that had, of a different brand. It's called a Ventrak mower. It is much more expensive. It runs around $25,000 and it does the same thing as the Cub, of the Cub Cadet. So he is recommending.
So after the discount, I can't hardly follow.
It's 12,599. It's 12,599. $12,599.
So that includes the municipal discount?
Yes, that's the municipal discount. Regular retail price is $15,999. So he is asking the board to consider approving the use of Nellis funds for this Cub Cadet mower. And I, there are, he has highlighted some exciting things. It's a triple seven gauge bear, I hope nobody starts laughing. Because everybody who knows me knows, you know, my husband or I write a check. Has this triple seven gauge fabricated steel cutting deck. It has a three-year limited warranty and it has dual rear wheels and weighted front rims so it can handle the slope and the angle of our lawns.
Questions, comments?
I was waiting for the Tim Allen sound.
Over behind you.
I was asked for a motion.
Motion.
A second? A second. All in favor? Yeah, what was the cost of that again?
$12,599. And we are recommending using the Nellis fund for it, and that is a fund that we recognize we need to start using and that it's appropriate in other accounts.
Can we have discussion?
Yeah, I thought, oh, I thought we had discussion.
Sorry. What have we done in the past?
We have used the.
What have we used in the past?
Our current mowers that are not necessarily the safest or are designed to cut such hills. So from a safety perspective, it is a risk management issue because the mowers we're using are not, are not designed as this, are not made for the great. Thank you. Yes.
I was a witness to CJ mowing outside my window by the parking lot. It was quite an acrobatic feat. He had a dad. Been quite dangerous, I would say. It was. I wanted to take a picture of him, but I thought maybe that should have.
Sorry.
No, no, that's, I need to, any other questions?
I just feel bad in this year, so I just wanted to explore a little bit. That's all.
But again, we have, we use, we found Nellis, so looking for a different alternative.
So having no other discussion, are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Pose, same. Okay, next point is the fitness center agreement.
So the fitness center agreement was attached for your review. This is an annual renewal of the agreement with our contractor, Canx.
Anything new? And questions or comments?
I have a question. I read through it. And I only saw in the beginning that it said that they would comply with regulations. It didn't talk about certifications of the people that would work. And I thought that was part of the main question of us outsourcing it was to make sure we had certified ability.
Discuss that last. Well, the morning are our employees. This is for the afternoon.
Right.
So she is certified?
Yeah, but I didn't find that anywhere. Except the first sentence that talked about following laws and regulations. Because I remembered us talking about it and I thought that was one of the real reasons of outsourcing it because then we had a certified person.
Right, she is a certified teacher.
Are you talking about CPR?
Yeah, she's certi-, no, certified, she's a certified PE teacher.
Yeah, she's a certi- no, a certified, she's a certified PE teacher, right.
Well, train, trainer or whatever it is.
Right, yeah, certified school education, yeah.
I couldn't find that in there, if somebody else saw it.
There it is, qualification, can you pop that in?
Read that, it doesn't say anything.
Oh, okay, cool. Can you make that bigger, please?
It just says, like, he's asked the experience knowledge.
There you go, a little more? There you go, thank you. Um, members shall be fingerprinted. Unless until criminal background checks.
So, I was just surprised there was nothing in there, cause I remembered our conversation about it.
I think the question that I, I had when I was reading him, like, I thought that was, I didn't even notice that, was, um, about what to do when there's, um, a substitute. You know, like, how, how is that handled? Um, does that person have this sort of, and whatnot, and the safety instruction if, for some reason, she can't be there and, in, in the evening for whatever reason, so.
She takes care of all that, she holds the, the liability insurance, but that's, we contract with her, she tongue contracts and pays all the employees.
Yeah, it does talk about...
Okay, okay, so that is for, for, that she handles that?
Yeah, she handles all of that.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's okay, yeah, that was a good question.
I, I was just concerned that it didn't say anything about any of the certifications that we, I think is the whole reason why we have it subbed out to her is that she's carrying, not her as the person, but to a contractor, because then they have the certification and they carry the liability, so.
No, well, that's what we, that's...
So, do you have a suggestion?
Yes, yes.
Well, I, I would think, I would think we should at least put in the qualifications that they will hold appropriate certifications, because it's, it's not...
We can, we can talk to the lawyer, I mean, this is a lawyer, obviously generated contract of many years. Um, we've, past eight years, we've just interfered with it a little bit, but it's been the same contract for twenty years. What, what we could do is, um, send it off to the attorneys again and ask them to see, can they, under the qualifications, put in a statement just about the qualifications?
Whatever required certification is...
Right, it's required, yeah, we can do that.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to table this contract until we do a meeting, so that we can have it updated?
That this is...
This is, yeah, everything's made very first.
Oh, okay. So, do you want to renew it, soar to that change being made?
Yeah, I, I think...
Depending on those additions.
I, I really think those additions need to be made.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
All right, so with that understanding, um, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Look.
Thanks for reading that bigger.
And we have all business?
I already addressed that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a two-for-deal.
So, then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?